United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Order any approval of minutes to the second budget hearing and the regular meetings.
I'll make a motion to agree both sets of minutes.
Second? Second. All in favor? Department heads, Jim, you wanna go?
Basically, we've got runs for the month added on and I said our, our year runs from November first to October thirty first, so we've completed the year on that part. And on the second page, I've actually got it broke down to township and town fires and actually what they was, a little bit easier to read than that. So one, I just wanted to give that to you, but that's about all I got. Any questions on? We're down about thirty-four runs from last year, which is a good thing.
Yes, it is. Do you want to have anything with them?
Thank you.
Todd?
I don't have much, we've got a few applicants, three of them are sticking out more than definitely the others. I didn't know anyone was gonna come up with a base salary.
It'll, it'll depend on uh their experience, their experience and so forth, so
Right.
the further you get in is when we'll go with these guys and like let's say these three, they have this, this, this mess, then they can establish the salary at, at that point.
Okay, 'cause I got a guy that has nothing. A police chief from Ohio that has Ohio observations. And then we have another person that has the same source as Nick. Uh hand on ball five DTs, all that stuff are in you. And special deputy. So I know we did interviews, which we probably will before the next meeting. I know that's probably one of the questions they're gonna ask.
Do you know, well, you were kind of in a similar situation, if they came out of Opa-ata, what do they have to do to get certified?
It's two weeks or a month or? It's roughly about a month, give or take. Um they pushed me through pretty quick since I was a reserve here for five years. So um yeah, they'd have to go through a process as well.
We just had a guy do that and he had to, he tested, he did his test for the criminal law and traffic law and he had to do an interview in private. He didn't have to qualify? Not up there.
Oh, okay. Actually, I had to call and they probably changed it. Uh because now I don't remember if I took that or not, 'cause I had to check it on tier two because they used to allow town marshal between deputies. Now it's town marshal six deputies, so we're good there. 'Cause I had to check on myself even though I'm tier one, I had to make sure that wasn't gonna count me as one. But we supersede that now, so.
So do we need to set a starting for these interviews?
That's up to you guys.
Anyone have any thoughts on that?
Was it advertised with any dollar amount?
No, it was basically, it would uh depend on, of course, you know, what they were bringing to the table with us. Such certs, have they already been through academy, that type of stuff.
So there's, there's no baseline?
Uh huh.
Is there a, a thing that we could say, hey, if you have nothing, you will be starting at this price? And then it goes up according to whatever, that, that would be determined later.
So for instance, Nick is our most recent hire. Okay, so Nick, I'm doing yearly right now, and this is with our, considering a two point six cost of living adjustment. Um he's at, he would, excuse me, be for twenty twenty-six fifty-four thousand, six hundred eighty-nine dollars. Is what he, he would be, so. And of course, he, we're gonna be putting him through tier two. But he came to us uh with all the special deputies and stuff, so you know, if you wanna start somebody who maybe is coming in green, you know, I, we have raised the, the salaries on these guys quite a bit, so getting an actual standard baseline is kinda rough. But you know, I don't know what you got, I don't know what starting is up at the other entities, is it like forty-five, forty-eight?
Forty-seven at sheriff.
Forty-seven at sheriff?
For road deputy.
For a road deputy?
I mean, my, I know Nick had some stuff, but he wasn't certified, you know, he had done some things. I think if we can get right around the fifty-four mark, I think that would be ideal for me.
For start or for?
For, yes, for base pay for someone that has nothing. But whatever you guys think.
Todd, does it set up on like a matrix every year you go up?
Well, it's more, it's basically.
Well, no, there, I mean, it's basically, there is no matrix, and so what these guys have done, we've done a, a couple different things over the last couple of years. Uh going into, was it twenty twenty-four, if I remember, I, you guys all got ten thousand dollar erasings. 'Cause we were trying to be sure that we were staying, you know, where somebody wouldn't come and get you guys. Um then we've just been doing cost of adjust, cost of living adjustments since then. Um but determining, you know, what, okay, you're starting here, you know, baseline's this, we don't have that yet, so.
Right. I'm just, the only reason I'm asking is 'cause I'm.
I know they're gonna ask, they should, but like I said. That's up to these guys to determine what they, what they want.
Somebody totally green, zero experience, zero search, I need more than forty-five and then have like a ten percent raise after they've completed the academy.
We used to have a saying in there, Ross, that once they could, they went through the academy, they got a so much per pay increase.
Yeah, but how much is that you put in behind Nick really, I mean, he has nothing, right, like he qualified with a pistol. He was a special deputy, right?
Yeah, he had all the mandatory topics, I guess.
Right.
Um he had the qualifications, the DTs, the EVO, mandatory topics, all that stuff. And he had worked.
Which you're gonna have to have, starting off anyways, you gotta take the forty hour, which is included.
And he had.
That's why I'm saying like a new guy comes in, he's gonna get that right off the get go.
I mean, I think honestly, and this is just an opinion, start a newbie like at fifty. It's flat fifty and then we can determine, you know, once we see who's coming, your guy from Ohio or the other guys. We can, you guys can adjust according to what they're bringing to the table past that point. But a newbie, I would say probably fifty, I don't know what you guys think, but.
I would agree with that.
'Cause Nick's also been here now for a year two. He's close to his.
He's close, was he, I lead a certified or he needs to go?
He's.
Hey, he's going, January nineteenth, he'll be on Washington.
Okay.
So, okay, I thought. Fifty, this guy, fifty-four behind our guy who has never been to the academy. I think that's a big number.
So my question is, is with Carl and Brian making the same amount, that means they're what, through the academy and off probation?
Yes.
So then Nick is considered on probation because he's not at that same order? And will he move to that after he goes up to the academy?
There is a little bit of encouragement stuff in the academy.
That's actually, that was something we used to write into the salary ordinance, um that they would, I'd have to go back and look.
Yes, I'm.
It adds, it adds like maybe thirty to forty dollars per pay.
Yes, that's, that's about what it was.
Once they, uh which we have twenty-six pays in a year, so um.
So an increase of forty, a pay or, no, you're looking at eighty dollars a pay period to get him up to, to get Brown up to what Jackson and Moffin are like?
Pretty much.
Yeah.
But they've also been here longer too.
Right.
So we're, are we looking at them just setting a salary and then it, then it'll be like this amount after the academy? And then this amount after the first year probation?
You can write it however you want, um.
I think we're looking for a bare minimum that Todd can go to.
Yeah, well, that's, like I said, that's your determination.
You'll make at least X.
Yes, right, but then, you know.
So you have to talk.
Yeah, and then, then I'll, you know, once they're picked or whatever, you guys agree you want to pick them, then you guys can assess the.
The, the actual pay?
Yes.
A baseline, you're just, you just need baseline.
Just, just a baseline.
So is this number that they're gonna pay, is this what Nick started off at?
No.
No?
No.
Did Nick start off at?
Well, I'll have to go get that, 'cause these, this is what I'm looking at for next year, like I said, this, so if you wanna take two point six percent of that and reduce it, that's what it is.
That's what he started at?
Yeah.
I think that would make sense to start him at the same starting salary that Nick started at.
So twenty-one oh three times point nine eight puts it at twenty-sixty?
What's that, about two days?
Fifty-three thousand, five hundred sixty.
Oh wait, he's not making as much as the lowest guy on the total now, but he's close.
He's close, I think that, I think that's.
And then you guys could, we can always amend the, the salary ordinance, the only person that we cannot amend the salary ordinance for is myself and you guys as elected officials. But as the employees, we can always amend the ordinance, so if you wanna say, okay, we're gonna start him out at like two thousand sixty per pay and then let's say we get him through academy, well, he went through academy, we're gonna raise it to this. You can always do that, like I said, we can always amend the, the employees, but we cannot amend this.
Is Nick pulling the bump up once he gets through the academy?
That's up to you guys.
Okay.
So um I would venture to say you guys just need to tell them what you think and then we'll, 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 'cause see, they're gonna have to be adding to the salary ordinance anyway, once they get hired.
I would almost say the fifty to fifty-two and then make sunny go over the after the academy and after probation to get to that.
And that'll be about the perfect time, 'cause then we can amend, also Nick, if you guys wanna Nick, amend him when he goes to, when he graduates academy. 'Cause there's some more stuff that Todd and I will be bringing up as part of the, all of this, as well as we go through discussing the salary ordinance.
Fifty thousand, it's nineteen twenty-three a paper.
So you're saying after he gets to the academy and his first year and then he'd be at the fifty-three, five, sixty, is that what you're proposing?
After the probation.
Yeah. Okay.
So after he goes to the academy, then bump up and then after the probation, so then he's full time.
Okay.
Then it's.
So there's um. Fifty-two.
You wanna start to?
Even, even two thousand a paper?
Right, that's fine, right.
Does this have to be in the motion at all or?
Uh no, this is just something you're talking about right now, once that person is hired, then we will put, we will amend the salary ordinance to include that person.
I'm good with fifty-two and then bump up like Jeff said.
They wanna do that on that? Jerry? Yeah, I, I think that's fair. So fifty-two and after first year.
I'll say fifty-two and then go see.
Right.
That way, that's kinda meaning.
Yes. Alright. Do you have anything else? Everywhere we work.
Have we decided on the black line, or we're gonna do that, sell it or? What do I need, where you guys want me to?
Basically, that if we try to sell and then if we couldn't sell it, then we would go ahead and take it to the scrapyard. 'Cause it's, it's, that car's in, it's not worth saving.
Process you want me to go through, really, sell it?
Okay.
Well, what you'll have to do is write up the specifics of the car and then give it to me, we'll advertise it that we're taking uh sealed bids, then like, we'll put it like maybe the first meeting in December. And then if it doesn't go, then we'll just take her apart and send her up.
Matt, do you have stuff that's sold like a, no?
No. And I gotta get you that, that time.
Yeah, and my stuff's all done.
Okay.
I think I bothered you about for the night.
Go grow your last night.
Anyone got anything, Todd?
Alright, thank you.
Matt?
Uh I got a couple things, but mine won't be detailed that. Uh asphalt's all done, we got a couple little things to do with painting the uh handicap stuff in the middle of town. But uh other than that, it went real smooth, all the roads got done. I felt like they done it, Tom and Mary, they mailed it on Monday, had it paved on Tuesday and we were ready to go. Um the only thing you might hear a little bit is I did ask the school to stay off of First Street for another week with the school buses to try to let this stuff set up before they start running them buses all over the road up here. 'Cause we did do uh Willow Street from twenty-seventh to second and then First Street. But if them buses start cutting up in their heart on it, they're gonna just tear it up. So I did talk to Joe, um I mean, he wasn't totally against it, but he's like, I guess we'll do what we have to do. I'm like, well, I'd appreciate it for another weekend. Um and then uh just the only other thing, got sleep pickup going on, so uh you know, just winding everything else down for right now. So, well, we had some work.
I think I know the answer to this, uh in front of, uh I'm gonna clarify, purchase, that section that did get paid, is that because of the censors?
Correct, 'cause if we got, um O'Meara said they would get into that, but the state referred me to stay out of it. That's why that one little square in front of purchases, we didn't mess with 'cause of the censors for the traffic control. It's just gonna be a heck of a lot more money to get into and then we're gonna have to get them involved, we just, it's gonna be a lot more than what we, what we needed there.
So is there, anybody got anything, Matt? Thank you. Uh moving on to the pickup, you picked up one day again. Uh December the sixth, maybe this, first reading, ordinance twenty twenty-five dash five, the X salary ordinance.
Alright, so as we've already talked about, um this is the salary ordinance according to what we did, talked about during the budget season, two point six, co, two point six percent cost of living adjustment, which is the projected for twenty twenty-six. The only thing that's uh kind of changed with this, um you will look under town council. Uh before Keith left, he and I had been talking about um increasing the, I get how I wanna say, the pay for the president and vice president. Basically, uh for the last couple of years, it's been the same couple people, hoping to basically um get some more involvements and different people in. And he had asked that, um and I've talked to our consultants and so forth, that, and this, like I said, I can take this out or I can leave it in. That uh whoever will be the twenty twenty-six council president, they will receive a five hundred dollar stipend at the end of the year. The vice president will receive a two hundred fifty dollar stipend at the end of the year. Um whether you wanna do that or not, that's up to you, um but I have to do it as a stipend, I can't do it as a part of um, you know, adding to your pay. Um like, let's say, Derek, let's say you're the president, fifty dollars um per pay and then twenty twenty-seven, let's say you're not the president, I can't retract it. 'Cause once I set your salary, that's where it's gonna, that's where it's gonna stay and I can't, we can never go below. So they said the best way to do that is to do the stipend, whether you guys want that in there or not, that's up to you.
Any thoughts?
I like it.
I like it.
I know the work that you and Keith have done over the last couple of years and it's probably not even worth that, it's probably worth a lot more than that, so.
It's a start.
Yeah, it's, it, it gets headed in the right direction, I'm for it.
Also, I know Todd has discussed possibly raising Carl's um pay a little bit uh once we're officially into twenty twenty-six, because he will basically assume John's position as L N two and captain. So that's something you guys will have to consider as well, we can, we can amend that too, uh but the key is we gotta get this ordinance passed um the last meeting before the, or right, our deadline is the last meeting of the year, 'cause we have to have that passed. So you guys can read it over, if you wanna make any changes, whatever, um get with me um over the next couple of weeks and we can, we can modify this with approval at least no later than the last meeting of December.
Anybody got anything else on that?
Is there, can we see comparison last year?
I don't have it there, but you, um like I said, it's just a two point.
Future, I mean, next month or, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I can, if you want a copy of it, I can have it ready tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
But like I said, it's just a two point six percent cost of living adjustment, so.
I was just saying you'd be nice for death, but see what?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, I could, I'll have copies right, I can have copies right tomorrow.
Alright, moving on, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen.
Okay, this is new, we, some of us were already talking about it. State, this is the new state um mandated policy for reimbursement and the recovery of training costs. We've already had this basically um, this agreement since probably twenty seventeen. Basically, if people left us within three years of their graduation in the academy, then they um had to pay us back a certain increment depending on how many years they gave us. Um so, but this is now uh the state's version of it, so this will supersede the one we currently have.
Any thoughts, questions?
Yeah, you'll have to make a motion.
Yeah, I mean, we should.
Make a motion to approve twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, set your pre-hiring.
Selecting, all in favor?
Alright.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen, the twenty twenty-six meeting dates and types.
So basically, that's where I gotta, I gotta do this, these are our meeting dates for next year. Um they post, we post them on the, the website, so um basically just need your approval.
Definitely goes over, any questions, any motion?
The header says twenty twenty-five.
Oh, wait, I can change that.
Who do we accept, twenty, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventeen? I'll say, all in favor?
We're drawing this line, it's business, um who, so you? Alright.
I apologize, did I, we got, we didn't even, 'cause that one, one last meeting we had, we took, we went over three or four days. And then I got that phone call, I'm not, I was on a cruise, and I died, so um right now what, where we're at, I've got the fencing, it's up there, construction fencing is scheduled to be moved and be gone September, or uh November fifteenth. And then if we have to do any road closures, what they've done is um we got held up by architects and so forth over some storm drains and it took them three weeks to decide what to do with that, which I lost three very good weeks. And then O'Meara came up here and he was being paid my parking lot, my paid his load, but he's coming back. So since then, they've asked for a uh a lane, basically it's like a offset lane from the road, they're gonna pull into the yard here so they can unload hand, if anybody's handicapped or something, and get the crap easier. So I would've been out of there this week, but they've got pricing for it and I'll find out. But it's still gonna be November fifteenth because we've, we've got, you know, we've been trying to say done and we just got held up. It's like O'Meara was ready to pour those aprons and they couldn't get caught. They weren't, they got in line and they couldn't get there until tomorrow. And now they're scheduled for the next three days to pour the front to get off the main highway. So that's one I have, but if we did any, any closures, it would just be like a daily closure. And, and we're supposed to be according to our schedule, you know, right around Thanksgiving, December first, we should be substantially complete with everything inside and the landscaping outside is what we're shooting for, unless something really bad happened with the weather. But like I said, that road, we're, we're opening, we can open it possibly earlier, but I know that I'm having the fence called, hauled off on fifteenth, well, it's actually the sixteenth is that Monday. Uh we got scheduled to go out and, and like I say, if O'Meara was paving on that road or pouring concrete or something, we just have to do a daily closure.
So you're looking November fifteenth?
Please?
Is it November fifteenth then?
Yeah, it's a Saturday and I think we moved it to that Monday. So it'd be like the seventeenth.
Anyone got any thoughts?
And if you want.
Seventeenth is a month there.
Yeah, if you want it soon, we can just try to do it soon, but everything O'Meara's got sitting in the gravel, but they need to use on the other side and we're trying to get that so we can pour everything out and pave all of our time.
Is Kevin McHurty the one that you've been dealing with as far as the permitting? That's a yes.
Yeah. Well, basically I have to deal with Steve Street or Sweetie. He's a construction administrator.
Everyone do that?
You know where he's talking about where they're gonna have a area on the east side or west side of the building. There's gonna be a drive-through.
I brought it going, if you guys wanna see it.
Where they can unload.
Yeah.
Okay. My suggestion is once you see it.
What they're doing is.
Yellow in there somewhere.
Yeah, this is Marcus Street. And this is maybe eight grand goods down in your building.
Yep, so it's gonna disrupt that house.
No, 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 no.
It's yellow, it's gonna go away somewhere down there.
Well, man, they wanna be able to drive.
If it's on the west side, okay.
Well, that's what.
You'll see.
That's what's got us.
It's gonna be like a drive.
Right now, and I should have.
From the south entrance.
To start this.
Should be all yellow.
Actually.
Right now, there's a place where.
Pouring concrete, that part, you actually gotta do.
They're on the west side down here.
They're literally from up here down there and concrete that's finishing this sitting Sunday.
I, I, it's been a while, so I mean, I haven't really seen it yet.
It makes sense. You play strong, it's once you see it.
Here's the plan. Oh my gosh, it's, so it just gets. End of parking lot, most of the street.
And not be out in the street, then move something like that if they're doing stuff down. You, you said you hadn't seen it?
No, uh-uh.
I don't have any answers, but. Okay, I get done with that. So basically what they've done is the two entrances is there.
Yeah.
That's this one and this one.
Right.
And, and we moved the light poles to here and here.
Mm-hmm.
And you're just gonna have to break this.
Okay.
So that's the plan. And like I say, I should know about Wednesday morning because our crews are wanting to move down the road from there. But I do apologize for missing that meeting.
Is there gonna have to be any street repaired up on Market Street?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be all that section from twenty-seven up.
Yeah.
To the, to the south for the most part. Yeah, we're gonna have to, and we'll have to look at it quite a bit and see what needs to be done up through there. Probably. I mean, not necessarily say milling it, but they're probably gonna have to put, we're gonna put a skin coat on top of that. When O'Meara's ever paving, we're gonna have to have something. I've, and I've told, uh, I told Steve that before and I told, uh, Kevin both. Back when we first started and we had it closed with all that heavy equipment, the way it was up through there. We're, I'm not necessarily, we're saying we're milling, but we're gonna have to put a coat over top of that, that road, straighten that road up. That road, Market Street's gonna need to have a coat of asphalt over top of it. Yeah, it's gonna have to.
So once it's opened by God, well.
Yes, and well, when O'Meara start paving.
Yeah.
Cause I talked to him last week a little bit about that when they're going to the parking lot.
Yeah.
Cause I asked Jake about it anyway. I said, hey, are you guys going to the street? He's like, I don't know. I said, oh, yeah, we're gonna. We'll have that discussion real soon before you come back. So, cause it's gonna have to have a coat on there. Like I said, I'm not necessarily saying we mill and it, uh, you know, inch and a half out, but I feel like we need to put that so we can keep the drain and, and. That, you know, that road wasn't in bad shape when it goes that way, so.
Well. And they, they had that on sweat ball just the other day. Have you looked at it?
No, I haven't. I have not been over it.
Okay.
Yeah, I haven't been over it. Like I said, I don't normally walk into, I walked in there a couple of times just to try and get a hold of it when we were.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I tried, try not getting your constructions done if I can help it, but, um, yeah, I can go over and take a look at it and see and then. I can call Steve and, and talk to Kevin both on it and get that straightened out. So that would be a problem there. Yeah, I can do that, uh.
As they add up right now, what we've got. Is the patch where we cut the wood for cement. And then we'll have the landing right here when we come off of that. It's actually a poor concrete. Uh, you gotta, and then it kinda holds a little more.
Okay, anybody else got anything there? Alright.
Thank you. Oh, we have to.
Uh, water and tree closure.
And then that's at the back, they're a little.
They wanna close one, one or seven? I think we're glad to. I have to put a closure, so.
I'll be honest, Jared can't remember, but he asked me to talk to just to talk about, I'd like to know what's the route they're running or anything.
Market.
Twenty-seven, then come back, go up to the school.
Julie did that the last time, huh?
I mean, we put stuff out, we rode the route, but. Uh, you know. So they're doing the same thing. They're coming across the North Market Street up by the medical building again.
Right.
Coming back. Going up to the high school. Or Needham Street, then coming back down the Kedmonds.
The only thing I got is if they wanna close that, we can't close that from all of the seven, not. We won't be able to close Market Street and all that the whole time.
I mean, I was, that's your guy's decision, but I mean.
For COVID, and I, we can't close.
It's our union.
Right. I think, I think they manned.
Let them and they follow.
But that, I think they manned the intersections is what we done. I set cones up for them.
Yeah.
At each intersection and then they manned those intersections to make sure. Like no cars off the side. So like when they were going down Market, you know, if they went kind of across Campbell, so on all the way, they had to man those, they had people. At each intersection, so that people could still get, cause that was my complaint, wasn't a complaint, but my concern was that they gotta keep it open enough so.
I mean, when traffic could get through somehow, we kept closed every one that comes.
I, I, I don't remember having any problems, but, you know, I don't, I don't think we spoke to you.
No.
I was gonna say. I mean, I need to talk to her again and make sure if that's exactly what she wants to do, but I mean.
Yeah, I, I just have to, I have to talk to Julie and see exactly what they're wanting closed and then we can discuss it next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, cause we do have some time, so.
Oh, yeah.
December sixth, so we still at least have.
I know, we share exactly the question, but. Well, and I already want to say that with North Market, because the state, I'll find out tomorrow, they're supposed to be letting that up. Other color could be one of them jobs up on twenty-seven that they're getting ready to do right here at Edge Town. And if they do that.
Yeah.
They won't be done by there. They're gonna want to cut through Market Street to come around. Cause they're not gonna be able to get right out past that one. That's gonna be, that could be delayed and I know, I don't know if it's gonna be that one. It's gonna be one at one twenty-one or if they're gonna do the one stapler one. But I know this is one of the three that's up yet to be done yet this year. So.
Alright, I'll get more information and we'll discuss it next minute.
And just to, since we're passing this down, I will be in Clark Treasure School for the next three days. Yeah, buddy. So I'll be in front of my computer, I'll be here, but I will be in my computer on, taking class from nine to three every day. So, yeah, that's fun. So just so you know, in case you can't, need something, I'll get back to you after, after class.
Yeah. Your clock's off?
I know.
Matt, you understand why I'm talking about that west side?
Did you take?
Yeah. I had a drive.
Yeah.
And both like the gun and van down here, cause the kitchen right there on the west side.
Okay.
So we can unload and I think there's.
Start talking like that.
Queens, I can't do both of them. Right now. There's a parking lot right there.
Well, and then my, December. I mean, yes.
You don't have to send it.
Or it's reasonable.
Jerry, that'll come to you guys to approve the, to paint that all yellow. I mean, if we change it, they'll have to come to you guys for it to paint it all yellow.
I will, I'm gonna go.
I think, I think it's. Bad weather, we can't paint this.
Does anyone have anything else they want to discuss?
No. When after he signs that, take a motion for a turn.